Good evening, everybody. At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for April 21st, 2022 at 6:47 PM. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. McMurra in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Please silence all cell phones or any electronic devices to avoid any disruptions around you. And now, at this time, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Now we come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the Board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net/BoardMeetingSpeakerRequest, no later than 3:00 PM the day of the Board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the Board regarding agenda items?
No, we have both. Both registered speakers are non-agenda.
Thank you. So, next thing on our agenda, moving very quickly, is our discussion item, 2021-2022 Financial Update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring, for your information, a financial update. It also pertains to items on the consent agenda, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Thank you, President Mays. Trustees, tonight we'll bring our routine financial update for you. Tonight, we're going to go over the same funds that we've been going over in the past, the ones that you see on the screen. The information that we present to you tonight will be as of February 28th, 2022. So, the standard items that you'll find in your financial packet, Board Packet today are gifts and donations, our bids, purchases, and construction items. Any purchases greater than $50,000, and we have a budget amendment for your consideration tonight. The one fund that we will be discussing that has a budget amendment for your consideration is the General Operating Fund, and there is no change to the bottom line of that General Operating Fund. So, this is just a look at that. Of course, the column highlighted in yellow shows the changes, and they're only functional changes that we're presenting to you tonight. And those functional changes, again, result in a zero net to the bottom line. So, our proposed budget amendment is still going to have us at a deficit of $22.6 million. So, we did look at, and we talked about, the TPAR adjustment last month when we updated you financially, and TEA has since given us an amount for that. Our rate is going to be 94.82%. So, what we've done tonight is our team has calculated, based on that rate, what our first four, six weeks would be, and we'll share that item with you. I do want to point out that there are no adjustments for the fifth and the sixth-six-week periods, and the operational minute adjustment does not hold us harmless as a result of enrollment declines, only for attendance. And so, of course, we previously discussed this, and the chart tonight shows you our adopted budget, and where we were at a $12.8 million deficit. Revised budget would be, remain at the 22.6, once you approve that tonight. And our estimate with that 94.82% TPAR is a deficit budget of 3.8. And so, previously, last month, we updated you. We wanted to share, so how does our budget look with the ESER impact? And we shared this slide out with you. I wanted to add our TPAR in it, and now it looks like this. So, again, we talked about this being the worst-case scenario, where we're adding back our ESER funds. If we didn't have those funds, how would the general operating budget look? And we were at that $60 million. If you'll see that line next to the bottom there, the $18.8 million, that is what our TPAR calculated as to increase our revenue amount. So, the worst-case scenario now is the $41.4 million. That's our estimate at this time, of course, and it does not include any payroll savings. We expect that, or anticipate that, that number will get better. So, I just wanted to share out, again, some of the financial considerations we've been talking about for you. Again, I'll point out Senate Bill 1, the one on the very bottom, which, after the election, we'll know for sure that whether or not we'll be at $25,000 or $40,000. We did communicate with TAD, with the Appraisal District, and they're going to give us a scenario at $25,000 and a scenario at $40,000, when we receive that information later this month. And again, this is just another repeat of how ESER looks and how it's impacting our general operating fund as well. And I wanted to, even though we're not bringing an amendment forward, I just wanted to share out the other funds and how they looked, based on the amendments that have gone so far. The debt service, we're at a $6.6 million deficit. If you'll recall, that is a result of the bond issuances and us paying the bond deficits off earlier this year. Our capital projects, again, that's related to the bond issuance, the $407 million deficit. The revenue's not there, but most of the expenditures were added, that's why you see that. And then our natural gas funds, we did some adjustments, estimated some adjustments to the revenue, and we estimated some adjustments to the expenditures, increasing that surplus. Child nutrition, there was an increase to the reimbursement rate, and that's what generated that $1.9 million surplus. And that is what I prepared for you tonight, for the financial information in the packet tonight. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Moss. Do I have any trustees that have any questions and/or comments? I do not see any lights. One comment I would like to make is, I appreciate very much the transparency of presenting this information to us, including the part that's ESER separately. For any future budgets and comparisons, it's completely out there. Here's where this money came from. And we all know that ESER funds only last for a short period of time, and they're going to go away. So, I appreciate the presentation of excluding that part for full understanding and transparency.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is addressing the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Mrs. McMurra?
Thank you, President Mays. I wanted to pull Item B, 2233, for additional discussion.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we have a motion. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move for approval without except item pulled.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Hogg, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion passes in the affirmative. Thank you. So, now let's discuss the motion to accept for our consent item that was withdrawn, which is number Alpha B, number 2233. Mrs. McMurra, would you like to speak? Press your button. Thank you. Okay? Is that working? Okay.
I had some questions about our new math screener, the NWEA map assessment. I'm not sure who from staff could address it. Okay, there you are. Hi, Dr. Words. Who do I ask? Thank you, Dr. Words. So, we're considering the new math screener selection process for NWEA map, and I personally am a fan of that assessment. We are using it in the district that I'm employed. This is our second year in, and from what I understand, and from what I've learned these past couple of years, it's a great screener. I had a couple of questions. First and foremost, I was curious why we're adopting this as our new math screener, but not reading. Can you just explain that a little bit?
Yes. We have a requirement from TEA to adopt a reading screener that's based on their list, and M-Class is the one that we use, and that's the one that TEA has approved for the age groups that we have primarily for most of the grade levels. We use Circle for our pre-K, but it's based on the commissioner's approval list.
Okay. So, is NWEA map for reading not on the approval list?
No, it's not that it's not on the list, it's just that we've been using, most districts, there's over 500 districts that actually use NWEA map for screener. The reason why we're moving to MAP is because the current screener that we have does not provide the information all the way down to the level that we need in order for us to act on it. So, for example, at the district level, we don't have the ability to scroll down from the district, to the campus, to the teacher, to the student, to make sure that the individualized instruction that's needed can be addressed there, and also so we can see district-wide trends. If you remember, a couple of presentations ago, I showed a graphic of a tree that showed you the quantile levels as they go up. And the way our screener currently works, there are a subset of skills that are assessed, and as kids acquire those skills or master them, they get a larger quantile score. But at the district level, it's hard for us to identify trends, to provide support to teachers about where those missteps may be. MAP allows that to be drilled down from the top all the way down to the individual student. So, that's the purpose of our actual transition.
Okay, so, just looking at the big picture, our reading screeners for all grade levels, transitioning from this school year on to next, there won't be any changes?
None.
Okay, great.
Yes.
One more question I had. I don't know if you have the same information in front of you as us, but we, with this item, have a breakdown of the pricing for the professional learning piece for NWEA map. And my concern lies, not so much with the funding of it, but the amount of professional development that this entails. From what I can see, it looks like several days of PD for administration of a test.
No. Yeah, no, let me explain. So, the document that I think you're referring to is on page 19.
Yes, sir.
So, that's just us trying to provide some, a menu of what the vendor is providing us options for us to select from, should we choose to engage with them as part of the professional learning process. So, on page 18, you see a table that indicates what the costs are for Year 1, 2, and 3. We actually negotiated that down, so our cost is going to be more like the Year 3 for all three years. And they are also providing us access to the system between the months of June, May, and June to assist with training at no cost. This side, Table 17, is really just saying, hey, if you decide as a school district that you want to engage with us, meaning the vendor, to provide training to teachers, these are the options you have, and these are the costs. We actually plan to do most of our training internally. We may leverage a few things. We have not planned it out in detail with the vendor yet, because we've been waiting for this moment to happen first, in terms of the Board. Once you approved or disapproved, then we would take action after that point. Most of our training with teachers will happen either during the summer months, and primarily during the August back-to-school day, that teachers come back to school, we'll do training then, too. But it won't be, it will not be all of these things.
Okay, because this is adding up to several, not just hours, but days, and all for the sake of administering a new screener.
Right.
So, I just wanted to ask about that, because I know that, especially next year, more teachers are having to go through the TEA reading academies, and so...
You're right.
That was, that raised a concern.
Sure.
What I'm understanding is, this professional development will be offered, but we're really being mindful in what we're requiring of teachers.
Yeah, so, this table you see in front of you, we will not be offering all of these things. This is just the menu that the vendor says to us, the system. We can pick and choose from this menu if we want to do some of these things, or none of them.
I see.
So, when we design our actual training for teachers, we may say, well, we feel like we really want you to do this one piece, and we're going to do the rest. But it will be, to your point, it will be confined to a reasonable amount of PD for them to be able to simply administer the assessment. There's no intention for them to do days and days and days of PD around MAP.
Thank you.
Yes.
And that was really important, that, you know, that's all I ask, is just that staff approach that with caution.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
That's all the questions I had, Ms. Mays.
Thank you, Mrs. McMurra. Mr. Will Banks?
Not quite done yet, Dr. Words. Thank you, President Mays. So, going on what Ms. McMurra was saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the benefits of MAP is it's known for its usability and ease of use. So, because of that, are we anticipating, what's your best guess in terms of ability for a teacher to transition to MAP in the need for PD?
Yeah, I definitely think there's a need for PD. I couldn't tell you exactly how many hours I would recommend until we finally meet with our team and talk to the vendor about what the trends typically are, based on, we've been waiting to talk with them since, for the vote. But traditionally, the transition to a screener does not require days and days of practice or things like that. The other thing about it is, we will be providing support as they initiate that action in the classroom in the fall. So, most of the training will be contained, like I said, in the August date, which all elementary teachers and secondary teachers have one district day in August. We're going to use a portion of that day to introduce and to provide additional training on how to not only administer MAP, but how do you utilize the reports that provided from MAP? How do you leverage the recommendations for interventions based on that data? That's the, those are the things that we'll share with staff during the training in the summer and in August. But like I had mentioned with Ms. McMurra, it won't be this extensive multi-day thing. It'll be, it'll be more like hours. I just couldn't tell you exactly how many hours yet.
Okay.
But reasonable.
Right. And hopefully, I'll stay optimistic that because of its ease of use, that it'll be lower than we expect if things go well. My final question is this. You mentioned one of the nice things, another nice thing about MAP is the ability to drill down from the district level down to the individual student level. Does M-Class provide that same level of drill down currently?
Yes, M-Class provides us with specific information around which components of literacy kids are struggling with. So, when I was providing information about how the specific parts of reading that, say, second graders are struggling with, or third grader, the trends, we can see that at the system level in M-Class. We cannot currently see it on Math Inventory, which is why the data I have to provide to the Board tends to be a lot meatier on the reading side. It's, we're just constrained, which is why we want to move to this vendor.
Well, I'm so happy to see us move, that my, our colleagues with other districts that use MAP, just praise it, you know, in terms of the data that you guys are able to provide from us, to us as a board, in terms of monitoring our goals. So, this is a good thing. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. Well, I think you kind of answered one of my questions. I was curious as to why the district has chosen MAP, but I think you answered it, because it gives us more accurate information, we can drill down and really see what the individual student is doing. So, that part, I think, was answered. Can you tell me which other districts are using MAP?
Oh, there's so many that use MAP, over 500. Richardson IS to use this map. I think, I'm not sure if Dallas does. It's a very, very common tool in Texas. In fact, because of the scenario that we have right now, when it comes to, like, screeners, some use even map reading, and they're required to give the screener M-Class, and then they turn around and do MAP anyways. So, it's, I couldn't tell you every single district. I can provide the ones that we know about, but there, it's pretty pervasive.
Okay, all right. And I think that was all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. I do not see any other questions. Do I have a motion to accept this withdrawn consent agenda item? Mrs. McMurra?
Thank you, President Mays. I move to accept the consent agenda as a whole. Oh, okay. I moved to accept Item B, 2233.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mrs. McMurra, and a second by Mr. Will Banks. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion passes in the affirmative for consent agenda Item B, 2233. Thank you. So, we now move to our discussion items, beginning with discussion Item B, which is our progress report for Board of Trustees, continuing education credit. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason. This is an opportunity for the Board to report out their training credit that the Board has received. There's also a requirement to do that, so at this time, it would be appropriate to you to share the training.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. So, I do have the report of individual hours for all trustees, and all have exceeded the required training hours. This is all pursuant to Texas Education Code Section 11.159B. Trustees have been provided literature covering the framework for school board development adopted by the Texas State Board of Education. I would like to also just kind of add, for transparency, the training that is all-inclusive of what I'm discussing. For our new trustees and experienced trustees, there's a difference. So, for our new trustee, which is Mrs. McMurra, her Tier 1 training was orientation to the Texas Education Code with local district orientation. Tier 1 for experienced trustees is update to the Texas Education Code training after a legislative session. Tier 2 training is team building and assessment training with our superintendent. Tier 3 training is continuing education that also includes Texas-required child abuse prevention and cybersecurity training. Tier 4 is student achievement training, and that is required every two years. And finally, completed required open meetings training was also completed. So, that is my report on continuing education for our trustees. So, any discussion or any questions? Okay, seeing none, we will move to discussion Item C. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason. This evening, we bring an opportunity to discuss our preliminary budget update. This is the budget of 2223 school year, and this is really, it may seem like the beginning, but as Ms. Moss says, the budget begins right after the last one has been adopted. But this is our update tonight. It's a brief update, but gives you a perspective of what's coming in the coming Board meetings and what to look for. Ms. Moss?
Thank you again. And like Dr. Cavassos said, this is basically discussing a little bit about our planning and the budget. It's not necessarily just about finance, it's about all areas of the district, and we start this work in the fall, actually. As he said, as soon as we get that other one adopted, we start looking to the next budget. So, we just want to kind of give you an overview, give you some historical trends of what we look at when we're planning for the budget. And so, we'll start with the timeline. I think you're familiar with that, this with what I presented last year, but I kind of give the highlights of what the Board has to do and when we have to adopt the budget. For July 1, June 30 district, we have to adopt it by June the 30th. We have to propose a budget by June the 19th. So, again, we've started the process, we've worked with campuses and departments, starting as early as January of this year, and we've done a lot of that work already. But this is the timeline, I wanted to just share that out. And so, the budget process, back in the fall, we have a demographer that we partner with who starts the work. The demographer actually comes up with a student enrollment number. That's what drives our budget. I know that we're all aware of that. And actually, we also partner with HR. HR actually looks at the staffing analysis to say, based on what the demographer comes up with and the number of enrollment, they look at that number. We don't just necessarily take their number. We look at it from an HR perspective, we look at it from financial trends and historical trends on the finance side, and our research and accountability department helps with determining what we're going to settle on for our enrollment projection for the next budget year. Human Resources looks at the staffing, and again, departments have already done that work. They do a zero-based budget process. They come to the table and tell us what they need to get their jobs done, and we have campus allocations also that are based on that enrollment projection. And so, the next series of charts are going to be historical trends. I'll go through them fairly quickly. It's information that we've shared in the past. Some of them have been updated, and some of them have not, but it gives you this historical items. So, the first one I want to share with is enrollment changes. I'll point out here that in 1920, that's when, 2019, 2020, that's when, that was our COVID year, and our enrollment was 59,533, and we dropped significantly the next year. Our snapshot for 2122 was 56,311, and our projection for the 2023 year is 55,603. So, you'll notice that's a reduction of 708. For the most part, we've been pretty stable. We've been trending down for the last several years, but when we do our estimate and our projection, we're relatively close. If you look at the snapshot, it's show for 2022, the current year, our enrollment number is 56,311, and we actually budgeted for 56,247, excuse me. So, we're fairly close in these numbers when we do our projections. I've shared this chart in the past as well, and it just strictly looks at our student-to-teacher ratio. That general operating revenue is going to be the yellow column that you see there. So, you'll see that our revenue is trending up. The one thing I'll point out for 21, 2021, and 2022 is we were held harmless. So, you'll see the revenues going up. You may ask the question, why is everything else going down and revenues going up? We were held harmless during those years, so that's the big thing. The other item to point out is those lines where we were looking at the student count, the teacher count, and the total staff count, they're trending the same way. So, that's simple. And so, our average daily attendance, of course, we've been talking about that a lot this year, and we talked about it in the presentation earlier, where we're being held harmless for that. And you can see the significant drop for the 2022 year, and that 91% is as of April 14th. We had been trending around 90%, so on the 14th, that's where we were. Our taxable property value, I won't talk much about this one, it's just a historical look there. You see it on the chart, 2021. 2021 is the tax year, it's for fiscal year 2122. Another thing that I will point out in creating our budget, we kind of look at this and monitor it and try to figure out where it's going to be. It's like a shot in the dark, right? Or looking at a crystal ball to see where it's going to be. We have been in contact with the Appraisal District, who has said, we're looking at values increasing up to 19% for Arlington. That's not our total value, but we're estimating and working closely with them. We will, on April 30th, have that information on our certified estimate, and we'll be able to kind of get a closer projection to share out. Our revenue trend, I think I've shared this before as well. That blue line that you see is our local revenue, and the state revenue is depicted in, by the gray line. And federal, you can barely see that, I should have chosen another color, but it's on the very bottom there, where we get very little federal revenue. I wanted to also highlight recapture. I think we've had a conversation about that before, where we are getting to that point. I think Arlington has been to that point before, back in 2018. We're closely monitoring that with our state revenue template to see whether or not we will be recapture, and that's going to depend on student enrollment and how it goes. If it continues to trend down, and our values continue to trend up, we will land in recapture. But we are monitoring that very closely. we will land in recapture, but we are monitoring that very closely. And so this chart just depicts our revenue expenditures and fund balance. The yellow line is going to be our total revenue. The red line is our expenditures. Whenever that red line exceeds the yellow line, we're in a deficit budget. So you can see where we've done that. If you'll note on 2122, what we adopted, we adopted a deficit budget. And our amended budget so far is still at a deficit. I shared that with you earlier tonight. And again, that's not considering our payroll savings. I do anticipate that at the end of the year, with the vacancies that we have and those payroll savings, that we should come out in the black with the whole harmless in the picture as well. And then the next couple of charts I just wanted to share, where do we spend our money, our expenditures by function? And this chart simply shows that instruction is the largest portion of our expenditures, at 62.7%. This information is based on the 2122 operating budget. And another look at it from the major object code, 88.4% is what we budgeted for payroll. When all is said and done and we have the vacancies, of course, that percentage will drop down a little bit. But that is the budget amount for our payroll. And so we've done some work as well to determine what our budget priorities we want for this year. And you'll see those on the screen. Competitive compensation is always there. Student recovery, intervention and academic support. Stabilization due to enrollment loss, that's a big job that we're working on and monitoring. And then support for the AISD strategic plan. We've looked at all of these items, and we're working on making sure that they are in our budget for the 2023 fiscal year. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. I know that that was short and brief. It's, and the team probably thinks, well, you know, we've been doing a lot of work, and but this is just a kickoff and sharing what we are planning so far.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moss. Do I have any trustees with comments and/or questions? Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays, and thank you, Ms. Moss. One of the things, you know, we're always concerned with as a board is our enrollment changes. So it looks like we've got about projecting a 1.2% drop in enrollment for next year. And our demographer, as you pointed out, our demographer's done a great job of really nailing that year to year. When they looked at that number, did they give you any indication on what the big main drivers were for the current drop they're projecting? Was it competition from charter schools? Was it people moving out of the district?
And mainly what we've been seeing historically is our competition from charter schools, I believe. And this didn't come from the demographer, but the information that we got from TAD actually is showing that we're at about 11% in enrollment. That could be Arlington is in charter schools. So it does have an impact on us.
And I would add, Mr. Will Banks, as well as birth rates and historical trends, when you see the cohorts going up, it's very telling. The cohorts, as they bubble in or bubble out, it just works through the system, hence our prekinder possibilities. Because if you can change the cohort at prekinder, say it's set a different way, if they create a bubble of enrollment, it tends to stay throughout the whole system.
Absolutely.
Small cohort at the beginning tends to stay at the whole system. Bigger cohort at the beginning tends to stay in the whole system. So that's one of the strategies. But birth rates, the other is housing. So it's really a complicated picture. It does include competition to charters, but I don't want to encapsulate that as the only reason. Housing was another big reason. Pricing out of housing for families in Arlington was another big reason. And then just not the availability of new houses.
Right.
So all these things, an aging population and things like that have contributed to this picture and continue to contribute to this picture. And then COVID, of course.
Thank you for that explanation. Kind of second, or maybe even more important than enrollment, is we actually get paid on attendance. And that precipitous drop in attendance, which was, I hope, primarily concentrated at the beginning of the year with the onset of the Omicron virus and the disruption it caused. Do we have any idea what we think that number is going to bounce back up to? For instance, what was, you know, what's our current week or month enrollment, and how does that differ than what we saw at the beginning of the year?
It actually had an effect. The first and fourth six weeks were the harshest effect because of the spikes. And so you see that a lot, and that's why Commissioner had agreed to first six weeks for sure, maybe the fourth, then of course the fourth, and then went first to fourth because it was all disrupted. So we anticipate that the trend will come back to where it was before. So if you show that slide again, I don't know if you can, Ms. Moss, but of where historical trend of attendance, that's where we want to get back to, not the 2020.
The 9633?
That was, that was held harmless, so that's why. And that was, you know, everybody's kind of present and all that. But that's our expectation, is that it starts to go back to the previous trend. But in reality, the disruption this year was severe, so much so that the state has acknowledged it and has actually come in with funding and stuff like that across the state.
Yeah, thanks for that. Hopefully that we will get back to that level because that's going to be key to our budget going forward in the next year. One of the things that's important to me is property tax relief. Unfortunately, in HB3, we do have a compression mechanism. I noticed to lower our property tax rates automatically if our values go up. You're saying the projection from TAD is about a 19% increase in property values?
Yes, that won't be total, but that is, and when we look at the housing market, that's what they're looking at, a 19% increase.
But in, but in the projected, on the very next slide from the one you're at, we're looking at, you didn't show any compression on the tax rate chart?
And so for this, when we didn't show a projection, we're still in the process of looking at that.
To the next slide after that one.
Okay, sorry. We're not prepared at this time to share out that until we get the actually, actually the estimated values from the.
There is a slide in our packet, so that's why. So yeah, so you, but in the current, in the slide you were showing, there's no compression built into those numbers.
No, absolutely not.
But we fully anticipate.
We do anticipate a compression.
Okay, that's good. And then finally, Dr. C mentioned it early, the importance of pre-K. When you presented the, you know, when you guys are preparing the budget and projections, how big of an impact is our universal pre-K going to be on our budgets in terms of expenditures?
And so we've already set aside some funding for universal pre-K, so we should be okay with that. It is in the general operating fund. We have assigned a balance for that to take care of the universal pre-K. If we don't reach the estimate of students that we have, we still have the dollars there for it.
Okay. That's great. Thank you, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Do I have any other trustees with comments and/or questions? I do not see any live. Okay, once again, Ms. Moss, I would just like to say how much I do appreciate anticipated compressions, anticipated home harmless. Everything that we're anticipating could happen is not being included in the information that you're providing, and that's for full transparency. And I, we all really do appreciate that because it gives us a real view of what could happen instead of being very positive as we'd like to be. But in presenting this information, thank you very much for being very transparent with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next discussion item is our strategic plan update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason. This evening we bring, just as a brief update, where we are with our strategic plan. And keep in mind that this was adopted in December, and so what's happening now, and you'll hear some of this today, is preparation so that we are ready to continue to implement it. But there's a lot that goes into that preparation. So first, we'll get a recap and then a little bit about that preparation from Dr. Wards. Dr. Wards?
All right, good evening, President Mays, members of the board. Dr. Cavassos, I'm going to share with you a brief update on where we are in terms of our planning and launch of the strategic plan work. And I'll start off by just sharing a brief recap of the contents that are within the plan, how it's designed, and things like that just for those who may be viewing for the first time. But I thought I would start off by sharing a quote that I think is really appropriate, is from Dr. Cavassos. It's contained in the actual printed plan. And he said, "I'm very optimistic about the future of Arlington ICD, and with this plan, we're doubling down on our effort, our vision, and the collective force that we have in our district to serve our students exceptionally well so that their success is a success we all share." And that really kind of captures what the point of the strategic plan is. It's really tried to drive a situation of work that allows students to have an exceptional learning experience so they're prepared for the future. When we think about a strategic plan, there really is a specific purpose in the way that we go about developing the plan. And the first one is to define strategies that are going to help us achieve our one goal. And then to identify very specific results that those strategies should be, have as deliverables as part of the actual work. When we think about the specific results and how we plan to achieve those results, we have working on, we have developed action plans that help us to figure out how we can do specific things that will help us achieve our call to action. And then really think about the strategic plan in terms of it as a map. It's almost like a roadmap that leads us to where we're trying to get to, and it was designed with the end in mind. So the initial thought that we had was, where are we trying to go in terms of the kind of experience learners need to have? How does that look, or is it any different in the current context we're sitting in versus what it was like five years ago? And how do we design a plan that will actually take us to that place we're trying to get to and then align the roles and responsibilities to that system? All of this is designed to really create a culture, and it really is captured in our call to action, which is really to create systems and structures that facilitate behaviors that allow students to actively engage in learning in the classroom. And this, we believe, will develop what we call exceptionally prepared students. And as you know, your adoption of a singular goal is pretty unique. I think in the world of education, most systems have multiple goals. But this goal articulates several things in terms of ensuring that all students graduate exceptionally prepared, which has forced all of us to really think about, what does that actually mean? And what we believe is that when a learner graduates from high school, we want them not only to understand the content and have mastered it in terms of state standards, but that they also have acquired these specific life-ready skills so that they can engage in any context outside of the school environment and be successful. These are facilitated with students, the development of these specific life-ready skills are facilitated in the classroom through the implementation of 12 specific best practices. And so the strategic plan, in terms of the instructional portion of it, really focuses on developing teachers' mastery and implementation of these best practices in the classroom, which we know generate not only improved academic outcomes for students, but also the creation of these life-ready skills. There are four focus areas. We call them strategies that are part of the strategic plan. The first one is about prioritizing a high-quality personalized learning experience for all students that are founded in the best practices and are designed to mitigate the unfinished learning that was generated as part of the COVID pandemic. The second one is to strategically align the initiatives to increase student achievement and increase focus and to reduce burnout. Burnout of teachers, burnout of students, the system as a whole. The third one is to prioritize the social and emotional well-being of our students, teachers, and staff. And then the last, of course, is to guarantee that the staff, the students, and the parents all have equitable access to the programs and resources that are offered here in our system. So this is a five-year plan, and what you see in front of you are the specific results that are attached to year one. So as, there are five. I won't read them verbatim because I know you have them, but they're really focused around the implementation of the best practices and active learning cycle. They're focused around really identifying the proper interventions and resources to help students overcome the unfinished learning that's been generated over the last couple of years. There's a focus around designing the support for teachers, including really thinking about planning time and curricular resources to make sure they have all the things they need to be successful in the classroom with their students. And then we also want to spend some time really understanding which initiatives or which programs are really giving us the biggest bang for our buck, are really returning on our investment in terms of student outcomes, and to prioritize those initiatives and possibly sunset those that we know are not doing that. And then finally, really expanding and monitoring the resources for students and staff in terms of their emotional and social health. So the way we're planning on the, of planning for this is where we're at. We're in the middle of the planning stages. So what I'll spend the next few minutes talking about is how we're going about that planning process and where the launch point is. So we're engaging in a project management training. And any person who has a role in the development and implementation of the actual action plans have been engaged in this planning process. And the reason we decided to do this is because, as you know, the plan is quite complex. And even if we were to go through each of the specific results, if we were to highlight all the action plans connected to those, there are several projects under each one of those specific results. And so what we thought about is if we want to make sure that we deliver those results in the proper timeframe and that we've done it with some level of methodology, that there needed to be some training on how do you actually manage a project? And what's the difference between a project and the work that you do day to day? So in our project management process, we've focused on several roles. There's a project sponsor, who really oversees a portfolio of the work, so one of those specific results. There's a project manager that works on one of the specific actions that are connected to that specific result. So there may be three project managers within that portfolio of work. And then there's a team of people that work with that project manager. And then, of course, we have stakeholders in the system that will be engaged. Now, when we think about the project management training, we really focus on a framework that allows us to consider all of these bullets you see in front of you, these eight bullets, in how we empower people to do the work, how we develop them to do the work. What do you do when you initiate or actually go to work? And then finally, how do you evaluate the work to make sure that it's actually yielding what you intended it to do? And so each of these eight areas really focus on those things. So I'll just give you some quick examples. So for example, under leadership, we are training people how to develop a charter, which is an agreement with the project management group on what the deliverable actually is. So there's absolute clarity in the work. Purpose is really focused around the scope of the work, how to manage for scope creep, how to make sure you're delivering the required deliverable. We do, the teams will engage in what we call an initial risk assessment to understand what are the possible risks in, that may prevent us from actually achieving our goal? And how do you have some contingency plans so you can overcome those as you're going through the process? Looking for possibilities for opportunity of change management, identifying the roles and responsibilities and the jobs, really understanding what the costs are going to be and projecting what those costs will be to make sure that you have the adequate number of resources to do the thing you're trying to accomplish. And then, of course, identifying the deadlines and milestones, where are the things, when, how do you identify along the way that you're actually meet, reaching your milestones that are going to take you to destination by the intended timeframe? And then, of course, building trust with our stakeholders as we kind of go through the process. So this is, that's really kind of the concepts that we've been focusing on in terms of our project management training over the last several, well, since, I would say about four or five weeks. So here's a kind of a very simple, I don't know what you call this, like a picture. I'm losing my words. Here's a quick picture graphic that kind of articulates the flow. So there's the kickoff meeting where you kind of get the work started. Then there's deep planning, which is all that stuff I just talked about. And then, once that planning is done and the charter is complete, where all the work is defined and that's approved, meaning there's total clarity between senior staff and the project manager about what's actually occurring, and it's aligned to the plan that you all adopted, then we begin the work. So right now, we're right in phases one and two. That's where we are. And so I thought I would just take a couple of seconds to share with you what those two parts mean. So the kickoff is where we're focusing. Right now, we're getting ready to start that kickoff. And when I say kickoff, it's the project sponsor meeting with the project managers. That's the initial kickoff. And they're going to be really aligning themselves on the why. They'll be spending some time defining the purpose and making sure that they are aligned on the project objectives and the key deliverables so that there's clarity between the person who is managing the portfolio of work and the project manager who's doing that work. They will articulate what the calendar deadlines and milestones are so we can meet our objectives and even put it in the form of a Gantt chart. and even put it in the form of a Gantt chart. And then finally, really define the roles and responsibilities and what the action items are. One of the key parts about the kickoff meeting with the sponsor and the project managers is to make sure there's total clarity with the groups that are working so that if I'm a project manager, I'm not off, I don't set myself off working on work, and then the sponsor is like, yeah, that's not the work. We want to make sure there's total clarity there. So once that happens, then what will happen is the project manager will engage, they will identify and finalize their team that will be working on that project, and then they will start the planning process. And the planning process really starts with finalizing what the projects are. So like I was mentioning earlier, if you think about the action plans, when we were thumbing through and going through the details of the action plans, what we realize is there are several projects within one action plan. And so what we had to figure out is how to make sure that we identify what those projects are and who's going to do them. They'll work in their planning about identifying the clear deliverables to that meet the requirements that were established in the kickoff, and that's when they'll engage in the process of doing all those things I mentioned earlier, like assess the risk, identify contingency plans, identify the resources to make sure they have them, all those things. And then finally, map out and identify their schedule of delivery. So once we finish this process, which will happen before we get out of school, I'm thinking in middle of May is when we're hoping, then we will start the process of actually engaging in the work. There's a quote I found by Abraham Lincoln, which I felt like kind of captures the essence of the presentation tonight, which is about planning. He said, "If you give me six hours to chop down a tree, I'm going to spend the first four sharpening the axe." And that's really the essence of this, which is we're trying to be really intentional in how we go about planning for it so that we can expedite the work as we move along throughout the years that we're engaged in the strategic plan, rather than trying to build the plane as it flies. And that's where we are. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Wertz. Do I have any trustees with any questions and/or comments? Mrs. McMurra?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Thanks, Ms. Mays. Can we go back to the slide where you originally started talking about the project management? It has the roles and responsibilities.
Yes.
Okay. Can you just walk us through one scenario of, and I guess whichever part of the strategic plan it would be, that would be a different team? So can you just walk us through one scenario of who the personnel would be that matches, who is the person that matches each of these roles?
Okay. So for example, one of the project sponsors, we have in what we call 1.1.1, which is the very, very first one, which is about best practices and resources for teachers. There is a action plan that's connected to professional learning. And so the sponsor, who oversees the portfolio of work, is Barry Fox. He's one of our executive directors. And so I work directly with the project sponsors, but he is sponsoring that portfolio of work. The project manager, who will oversee the professional learning, is Alita, who is our director of professional learning. But she will not do the work on her own. What will happen is when we get down to the action plan for all the little parts that are quite complex in terms of meeting that specific action, we will solicit stakeholders to be part of that group who will actually actualize that work. So that may include people from curriculum instruction, it may include teachers, it may include some community members. It really depends on whatever the work is. And then that project manager and group of people will work on actually, working on the deliverable itself, but the management of it will happen with like this thread between the sponsor, the manager, and then the team themselves. And then, of course, that connects to myself and then Dr. Cavassos and you all.
So it sounds to me like it's not necessarily new jobs for our existing people. It's just being more intentional about addressing what's in our strategic plan, and we're routing those pieces to the appropriate departments. Is that right?
Yes, primarily. The other thing about it, too, is the way we're kind of viewing is the strategic plan defines the actual work. So if you're engaged in all these other things, besides the day-to-day operational things that we know need to happen, but our goal is to focus on the strategic plan. So if you're engaged in initiatives that are actually pulling you away from the actual core work, then we, those aren't the things we want to be doing.
Exactly. And then we're not really doing all the things we were set out to do, like reduce burnout.
Right, exactly.
Thank you. Okay. That helps a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McMurra. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays. And Ms. McMurra, that was a great question. That was one of the ones I had, is defining the roles. You know, the one thing that I think is critical that seems to be missing, first of all, I've got to say, this is excellent because this is my day, each and every day, is doing just this with every one of my clients and the projects that we lead, multiple projects we have now going on. You know, the one caveat I would say was you've got kickoff here between...
Makes me want to check my phone.
Yeah, that was a nice little break. So you've got the kickoff process, you know, as a key activity at the beginning of the project between the sponsor and the project manager. But really, I mean, kind of what we do in industry is we do a lot of that planning. We have kind of a kickoff, but we do the planning and get the plan and identify the resource, everything you outlined in the planning phase. But I think what's critical to the success is, once you identify that team, you've got to have a successful kickoff and launch with that team, make sure they're all on board and all rowing in the right direction, same direction as everyone. So it looks a little odd having kickoff before the planning.
Well, if I can just, you're totally 100% correct. I was describing the kickoff between the sponsors and their project managers, but they will replicate that with their actual team because the work that you described, which is all the planning process, has to happen with that group. The only reason why we haven't kicked off with those teams yet, or the project manager hasn't, is because they have to first identify them. But you're absolutely correct, and we have every intention on that being the case. So we're going to kick off the work with the sponsors, with the project managers, but then you're right, the project managers will then have to do it with their actual groups, to the point that you made, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, one thing that I think is critical to managing projects like this, especially when they're integral to your strategic plan, is having the right software. Have you identified software that you're going to use to help facilitate this process with all the team members?
We haven't picked a specific software. We have talked about that. We haven't identified one that we intend to use right now, but I agree with you. Yes, we've talked, we've actually had that discussion, but I, we don't have one that we've talked about or identified, yeah.
I can recommend it. All my projects now, all my groups that I work with now use that. Bowie has his own preference.
I use it.
Yeah, so. It really does help facilitate the communication and keep it out of email and hold people accountable, which is what you want. And so I would recommend you look at something like that or Monday.com. It really does provide a lot of benefit and increases the chance of success for projects like these.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Do I have any other trustees with questions and/or comments? I see no lights. Dr. Wertz, thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Okay. We will continue on our agenda. The next thing on our agenda is open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have requesters registered to address the trustees on non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have two registered for questions.
Okay. So the second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have two minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and please end your presentation at that time. If you have any documents for the board to review, please hand them to Assistant Superintendent of Administration, Dr. Hill. Okay. So my first speaker is Cindy Kalalua.
Thank you for having me. I have a dream where students and teachers alike are excited to come to school, where teachers have the time they need to plan rigorous, engaging lessons, the time they need to use their formative assessments to plan differentiated instruction to meet the needs of all their students. I have a dream where students are supported by dedicated interventionists from the very beginning so that they're able to achieve their maximum potential and meet or exceed all the student learning objectives, where they do not feel lost, left behind, or stupid. I have a dream where learning is joyful for everyone involved. Will you help me achieve that dream? Because it can't be all serious.
Our next speaker, Marisol Fritz. Yes, you may.
On April 7th, my two-minute public comment mysteriously disappeared from the livestream, also missing was five minutes of the FEMA floodplain details with multiple slides in regard to where the new Carter Junior High is being built. 500 people were watching the live broadcast that night. Then it all magically reappeared in the final video posted on April the 8th with a whopping six views. So the public should go and watch both videos. So I'm just hoping that tonight my speech is not suppressed again. Also, on April the 7th, the board approved the recommendations from the Student Health Advisory Committee, also known as the SHAC. This was for the highly controversial Human Sexuality Curriculum and the textbook by Goodheart Wilcox. I haven't met one parent that knew what the SHAC was, much less was part of the committee that started in 2016. No one can find any emails, forms, or any communication whatsoever. I've been part of this district with my children since 2003, so I know all the emails that I have, and I can go back and find every single one of them, none from the SHAC or about a SHAC. It's supposed to be, this committee is supposed to be comprised of mostly parents of students that are currently enrolled. There are nine people on this committee. I don't know who they are. No one knows who they are. Never heard of Lisa Starr until last week, or the 7th. The Chair of the SHAC, Ms. Starr, claimed that open meetings were publicized and that the community and parents were actively involved. Then she said that no parents submitted any feedback on an online forum. Yet, no one on this board asked her how this information was being publicized or any detailed questions. You all just approved one of the most controversial subjects facing education today with zero transparency, as far as I can tell so far. Also, under the guise of SEL, the following books are in our library. How to Be an Anti-Racist, Stamped White Fragility, and Me and White Supremacy, with a workbook that has exercises on how maybe white people can feel guilty for being white. I'm not white, but I think it's wrong. So if that's not CRT, I don't know what is, and y'all approved that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next thing on our agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. I'd like to share some information about our district. If you visit Wood Elementary, you'll notice a different kind of vending machine, and you should see it up there at some point. The school is home to our first book vending machine, thanks to the efforts of Martin Senior Courtney and her mom, Kristen, who is the school counselor at Wood. Courtney collected books, and you can see that, very, very creative there, and then donated them to, in an effort to get her gold award, the highest honor for Girl Scout seniors. Her mom spearheaded the fundraising effort in the school to purchase the machine. Now students at Wood get to visit the machine and get a free book, with a goal of every student getting two free books by the end of the school year. A big congratulations to both Courtney and Kristen for all their hard work. All right, so our students had their voices heard, thanks to David Lewis, who is in the audience, but we won't point him out there, but our Director of Food and Nutrition Services. So schools have been taking field trips to our Food and Nutrition Services building and helping them through the bidding process for food items in 2223 school year. As you can tell, students are doing taste tests and providing feedback to Mr. Lewis and his team. The department is using the feedback to help determine what food will be served on campuses starting this fall. In addition to taste testing, students got a tour, which they really enjoyed, of the facility, and a lesson on nutrition. So next fall, when our students are eating steak fingers or pizza or any other things that Mr. Lewis puts on the menu there, they'll know that they had a say on what's on the menu. And by the way, they were very transparent with their comments and feedback. Mr. Lewis will never forget the experience, right? So I want to thank our students and our teachers and everyone involved in this. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for not only this experience, but everything you do and getting this kind of feedback from our students. All right, so Tuesday night, members of the board and I had a chance to honor some of our amazing teachers in our district's annual Teacher of the Year banquet. So you see a picture there that Spence took. This was our first time back in an in-person event since 2019. The theme of the event was superheroes, and we've always known that our teachers are superheroes. But the last two years, there's really proven that. We had more than 60 of our 77 campuses honored, and it was great to see them all and tell them how much we appreciate their work. And I know that every speaker who spoke told them how much they appreciated the work that they do, and I'll just share that they represent all our teachers exceptionally well, and they represent our profession of education exceptionally well. So thank you to our Teacher of the Year teachers. And teachers aren't the only ones we're spotlighting this month. It's Autism Awareness Month, as well as Occupational Therapy Month. We're blessed in our district to have outstanding occupational therapists who work with our students to help them overcome their challenges and get the most out of their education. Our special ed department also works with students with autism and helps provide families with much-needed resources. The department does everything from parent training to evaluations, and I want to sincerely thank our occupational therapists and members of our special ed department for everything they do for our students and families. You can find out more about their efforts in our looped-in blog on our website because we've spotlighted them. So thank you to them. Finally, don't forget that Saturday is a big day for us in our district because we're hosting our annual teacher job fair from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Dan Diaper Career Technical Center. Representatives from all our schools will be on hand with our future teachers. There's also a chance for on-the-spot interviews, as well as potentially receiving a job offer that day. Come join us and see why it really does pay to teach at Arlington ISD and the outstanding environment that we have in our schools. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have any trustees? Yes, Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. Mr. Will Banks and I both are members of the Arlington Rotary Club, and our Rotary Club years ago adopted Webb Elementary as our school. And this week was their Scholastic Book Fair, and our Rotary Club buys a book for every single student at Webb Elementary. And it's so fun to be there. I was there yesterday and watching them come in, and they get to pick whatever book they want to, and then they bring it up to the table, and we talk to them about the book and encourage them to go home and start reading it that night. But their favorite thing is we put a label, and they put their name in that book. And then when they close it, they say, we get to take this home, this is my book, and they're so excited about that book. And then in Rotary Today, so many of their students wrote us thank yous and brought those to the Rotary Club so they could thank us for the books. But they're just wonderful kids there at Webb, and I really appreciate the work that our Rotary Club does in partnering with Webb.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Are there any other trustees with any reports? Okay. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays. And last night was the North Texas Area Association of School Boards meeting, and it was held in our neighbor district, Mansfield. It was a phenomenal night. We heard a lot of great information about how to incorporate community feedback on issues that might be facing districts like for... that might be facing districts like for security and safety, as well as case studies back on COVID. A lot of great information, but Mansfield was able to show off its phenomenal Early Childhood Development Center. A lot of great things. I want to say thank you to our neighbor district for hosting that. That was a great meeting and also a great group of fellow trustees from across the area.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Okay, I see no other lights. As I prepare to dismiss, I would like to just add, as we've done celebrations for teachers, for different staff members, as we continue, the world, not just us, but the world continues to fight and support education of our students, which are the future, I just want to have one comment, a quote that says, "We cannot be separated in interest or divided in purpose." And the interest is the success of all of our students, particularly those here in AISD because that's who we're serving. The purpose is that 100% of our students, not just some, not just a few, but 100% of our students will be successful. So just be kind and continue to support education, continue to partnership with the district by serving on committees, by spreading the news of all the good things that are happening here in the district. And once again, we are always open to ideas and comments from the community because at the end of the day, we are all in this together. So with that being said, it is 7:58, and this meeting is adjourned.